Please read the row.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein, here. Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge will be led by Ray Foyce, Ward 5 council member, uh, councilman.
Ward member.
Please draw me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as with this amendment in item number nine, consent. We are changing, let me read the resolution approving completion of project and acceptance of work for work performed by Kahoi Pump Services, Inc. of Sumner, Iowa, for the total contract amount of $234,318.77 and release of retainage in the amount of $11,715.94 in conjunction with the final clarify number three, de-watering wells project contract number 1032. So with that amendment and through the minutes of July 19th, 2021, regular session as proposed and minutes of July 26th, 2021, special session as proposed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have an agenda. First item up are public comments and I know we have a couple people.
I've got a short list.
Okay.
Our first individual who's registered to speak is Ethel Love.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here. It's concerning the fireworks. As far as the dates and the time and the length of time, that's not my concern. I have no qualms about that. I have neighbors that come across the street next to my property and set off firecrackers. I don't own the strip that they're setting off these firecrackers on, but my property is right up next to that lot. It explodes over my property and over my roof. And since 2019, I've been pleading with them, can you back away? You're going to catch my roof on fire or my property on fire or you're going to injure me. In 2019, I called the police. Police didn't come out, but that was over with by the time they got there. 2020, the same thing. 2021, I called the fire department because I smelled smoke. I was smelling smoke. They came out along with the police and I asked them to look around the house, which they did do. They said they didn't see anything. Later on, debris was flying off my roof onto my driveway. So I had my insurance company come out. They said it looks like firecracker debris on top of your roof and some exploded material. I have pictures of it and a written statement from my insurance company. I'm concerned that eventually it's going to do either damage to my home or to me. I'm addressing this to the city council to see what alternatives I have to address this issue.
All right, so Mrs. Love and I have had conversations. We've had the police go out, fire department go out. And it is more so that they are not shooting them outside of the time. It's a preference of how close they're shooting it. The people did have the approval from the person that owns the property to fire fireworks off that lot, correct?
Correct.
Your problem is you don't want that close to your house because you're worried about something possibly happening.
Well, something possibly did happen.
So was there any damage to your house? Because we didn't, we didn't talk about, we talked about the police came out and thought you smelled smoke, but you're saying you have property damage now?
Not, no, there was debris on top of my roof. That's what I'm saying. And it was from, my understanding from my insurance company, it was from them setting off the firecrackers. I've been told that I may have to get a lawyer and I'm trying to avoid that. I am concerned that if it continues to happen, it's going to damage my property. Or hurt me because I'm out there begging them to stop, but they're, they either laugh at me and turn their heads and keep doing what they're doing. So my concern is that it's going to damage my property. I want to reiterate again, I'm not talking about the time, the dates or the length of time. It's how close they are to my property and the damage that could possibly happen. And from my insurance company, they're saying that looks like firecracker debris from what we can see. And he took a piece that was burnt and he handed it to me. They adjusted it. So I don't know what recourse other than legal recourse. I'm asking, is there a citation? What can I do to prevent this from happening or possibly damaging my property or hurting me?
All right, um, we'll ask the city attorney, um, legal recourse or?
Martin Peterson, legal department. Because I understand the ordinance, they have to be shot directly over the property where they're authorized to be. And if debris is deposited on the neighbor's house, that could potentially be a citation for littering. So I think there were, those are the two issues I am able to identify at this point in time.
So do you have the pictures from your insurance?
I have the picture and the letter that they wrote.
All right, so does that come to your office? Yep, you can submit those things to the city attorney's office. And could you state your name and address for the, I mean, your address for the record? We need to have that.
715 Newell Street, Waterloo, Iowa, 50703.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Love.
And again, I just want to reiterate, it's not about the times or the dates or when they're setting it off. It's where they're setting it off. And I asked her, could she set it off over near her property? Because eventually it's going to damage mine. And I do have the pictures and the letter that my insurance company wrote up for me.
All right, so those could be submitted to the, um, the city attorney's office.
Okay.
Uh, he will definitely take a look at that and decide whether or not it's a citation.
And I'm hoping that, actually, I gotta live in this neighborhood and I want it to be peaceful for me. I'm not trying to hurt them. All I want them to do is be considerate of me and my property.
Right.
I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I don't even want them to have a fine. But since they keep ignoring me, I don't know what to do.
Well legally, if, if, if it is a citation and it's proven with the documentation, they will more than likely get a fine if it breaks the ordinance. So forget that to the city attorney's office. You can talk to him in the morning or tomorrow. And if they need to be cited and you have the evidence.
Yeah.
Then they will be cited. So we'll go from there and that's, um, what we'll do. So thank you, Mrs. Love.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up is Jim Hurst.
Good evening. Recognize a couple faces here, but I don't know everybody. My name's Jim Hurst with Hurst &amp; Sons Contractors. I'm here to make a rebuttal statement about some inaccuracies and some derogatory statements that was made about myself and my company on the last council meeting concerning the water main work that was done on Maxine Street. You've got some letters from some individuals there, a lot of inaccurate statements. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody might have as I go along here. Concerning Sheila Beal at 315 Gale Street, she had a lot of complaints about her yard and concrete pipe and manholes and intakes and black pipe and everything that was stored in her yard. That had nothing to do with Hurst &amp; Sons. That was a different contract, another contractor. She, uh, but it was implied that it was us that was doing that. She also made a comment about her driveway being removed by us. It was not. Again, that was another contractor that removed that, another subcontractor for Aspro that removed that driveway. It was not us. Concerning the, um, fire hydrant issue, there was quite a bit of talk about the fire hydrant issue, location and so forth and so on. A letter here from Laverne Beal and Sheila Beal wanting to move that hydrant location. They were, this, Ms. Sheila Beal was very combative, argumentative, brow beating, talking over me quite a bit, trying to dictate what went on out there on the project. We do not work for her. We work for the city of Waterloo, specifically Aspro as a subcontractor. And we installed the water main as per the design. It was improved, it was inspected, approved, paid for, the whole nine yards. We did have a discussion about moving that location of the hydrant. I said I would try to accommodate the homeowner, but it was all dictated on elevation. We had to have an air vent for the new water main to be installed to fill the main and bleed it, bleed the air out and pressure test and all that type of thing. And while I had discussed accommodating the location, it, it was determined when we were laying the pipe that it had to be installed where, where it was originally designed. So, um, concerning the water service, Sharon Howard at 1237 Maxine made quite a few verbal statements about why we were digging in her yard, that we didn't install a new water service. We didn't know what we were doing. We didn't know what we were looking at, shoddiest work they've ever seen, you know, on and on and on. Her water service came out of the corner of her house and within five feet was on the property of her neighbor, Sheila Beal. We were directed to separate the two water lines and have a curb stop, a shut off for each water line. So we dug all the way to where we encountered her water service on her private property, installed a new water line, new curb stop, connect to the new water main. Backfilled it. She said we didn't bring in any black dirt. We brought in 12 cubic yards of black dirt on two different occasions, six cubic yards each. We planted about 26 pounds of grass seed on a very small area, so it was heavily seeded. And the grass would have grown if she'd have watered it. And Sheila Beal had also made the comment about the grass from the first stage being nice and green and so forth, and the grass on the second stage, second division of Maxine, not growing. Well, the difference is, is all the homeowners on the first stage watered their grass. The homeowners on the second stage didn't. So I'm sure I'm going to miss a few things here, but basically I wanted to make some comments that were derogatory towards me and my business. And I see I only have about 36 seconds left. But I've been doing underground utility work for 49 years. I've done high pressure steam, entire high pressure steam system on Andrews Air Force Base, every hangar, every building, including where they store Air Force One. I've done 60-inch water main for the Des Moines Water Works. I've worked all over the state of Iowa. The Hurst family has worked in Waterloo since the 1950s. And we've done work in Waterloo and the state of Iowa for a long, long time. I'm not going to stand and let a couple of begrenled individuals that were hostile to us the minute we got on the project to tarnish the Hurst family name or our reputation. Because we worked very hard to establish and maintain a very good record, very good track record.
All right, all right.
If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we've got Tavis Hall.
Tavis here?
He's on Zoom. He went to Miami.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
He is.
We can.
All right. Hey, I'm on vacation charter. Relax just a little bit. I just wanted, Tavis Hall, 218 Maryland Avenue in Waterloo. With Experience Waterloo, trying to refresh after RagBri. And I just wanted to make sure, I took a couple of seconds to say thank you to some amazing city staff that helped us execute what I think, and I think what most riders agree, was a really top-notch RagBri experience. Randy Bennett, his staff, Sandy, Matt, all the folks over there at Public Works. JB Bolger, James Bolger, JB over at Leisure Services and all the other folks over in that department. Chief Fitzgerald, Kelly, McHugh, Payne, all of those guys with PD. Tree Laura Rodriguez over with Waterloo Fire. Ken Schenkel with Water Research for the Arts and their awesome staff. As well as Jessica Rucker over at Main Street Waterloo. All of those folks. We legitimately had a great RagBri experience and I think it definitely demonstrated, you know, really what can happen when folks come together and work through what is a logistical hurdle, to say the least, being RagBri. You know, it was a labor of love. We started this process 23 months ago when we first put in our bid for RagBri. And what ultimately turned out was an amazing opportunity for folks from across the state to engage, to experience Waterloo. And we're really proud of not just the product that was, that ultimately was presented to those riders, but all of the hard work and continuity that was demonstrated by our PD. I know a lot of times there's a lot of naysaying and frankly shade thrown at city employees and not often enough. All right, we don't tip our caps often enough to those folks. So I just want to take a couple moments, say thank you and, uh, and pass along that city staff really, really did an amazing job. We wouldn't have been able to be nearly as successful with the work of their efforts. So I just thought you'd watch.
All right, thank you so much. And echo your comments. I've seen people working the day before. I even seen Chief Tree Laura spraying spiders along the bridge and PD working, some logistical things to make it a success. To the many volunteers, I think I saw Jillian, probably, I don't know, 11 or so getting ready to help with cleanup. So it was really a team effort from the city to our staff, to volunteers, to, yeah, we said, he said, he said Main Street.
Did he say Jessica?
Yes, he did. But everyone, incredible team effort and thanks to Experience Waterloo. Talked to riders from Florida to Maine and California. And people were really, really excited about Waterloo, Iowa. So it was really a good shot in the right direction. So thank you to everyone that we didn't mention as well for the job that was being done as well. But Kelly.
All right, and our final registered speaker is Cheryl Peterson.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Peterson. I live at 922 Byron Avenue in Waterloo. I am here as the president of the newly restarted Liberty Park Neighborhood Association. And we would like to publicly thank our two council people for jumping in and helping us from the very beginning with our first face-to-face meeting. We had our first general meeting last week and not only did they come, which we were happy because that increased our crowd immensely, but they brought with them Todd from Leisure Services to explain to us about how we could go about having a facelift done at Morris Park and the possibilities of maybe an ice skating rink this winter with all the liabilities and problems that go along with that. They've helped us with the fireworks noise ordinance or the fireworks ordinance and what exactly it said, so we could post that on our Facebook page so our residents knew. We have the biggest neighborhood association in Waterloo now. We expanded it to 1,900 homes. We were crazy when we walked those streets and deliver things. They helped us secure a porta potty at the splash pad, which was asked for by several of our residents. We've been able to contact them for anything that we needed. If we have a question about anything, they get back to us through text or email right away. We appreciate their support and look forward to their contributions in the rest of this year and the rest of the city council going forward in the future. But the main reason I'm here is to invite you all to attend National Night Out at for Liberty Park Neighborhood Association at Morris Park by Kitchell School tomorrow night. We've got lots of good things planned and we hope to see a lot of you there.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your leadership as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to address the city council and mayor on staff on non-agenda-related items?
Mayor and council, David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. I'd like to have from the consent agenda, number 11 and number 18 removed for further discussion.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Forrest Dilawu, 1725 Huntington Road. When I see things in the paper, I like to go look and see what they are when it affects the city. I saw about the murals and I drove down and looked at those. Those are nice murals. However, the one that is on the Johnstone Building, I would love for us to find something to do with that building. We paid almost a half a million dollars for that building about 10 to 12 years ago. We gave up all the taxes it was creating, gave up all the fees that were coming in on that building. The taxpayers of Waterloo deserve a better return on investment. Again, those murals look very nice on a half a million dollar building. It still looks nice. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items? Going a second time. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. Earlier today in our work session, we had our neighborhood services update from Felicia Smith-Nalls. And she did mention that tomorrow night is National Night Out. So shout out to all the neighborhood associations that are actually sponsoring something tomorrow night. And I would like to mention that the Southdale Neighborhood Association, the one that I live in, is doing their Neighborhood Night Out August 7th, which is Saturday. It's the first time they've ever done something like this and it's probably one of the most organized events that I've seen in a long time. This is going to be the first time that the Neighborhood Services Mobile Trailer with all the equipment is going to be used. It's going to be Saturday night. But we've got sponsors from Target, Sam's, Crossroads IV, Home Depot's putting a craft table up so that the kids can build things. And then Rocket's Bakery. And then we're also going to have members from the Waterloo Cedar Falls Symphony playing from 6 to 7. So exciting time. I would hope that other neighborhoods would follow suit that don't have a neighborhood association right now. And if they'd like to start one, we have the right person to work with them, with Felicia Smith-Nalls, to, to set them up and to get that, get their neighborhood organized. Because we've got a lot of things that we can, we can assist these neighborhoods with and she's the right contact person. And I had one more thing and then I just wanted to ask our representative from the police department, Captain Maylis, I was really concerned with the amount of overtime that the police department is incurring right now. And if you could just kind of talk a little bit about that and why. I know we've got officers working 16-hour days on recall, enforced recall. We've got all these events going on and they're, and they, and they're back to back to back. And these, and these officers are out there working their normal shifts. And then they're on top of that, working an extra eight hours some days. So I've been curious how this is affecting the police department's budget. I know we have a brand-new budget, but I hate to shoot the overtime in the first couple of months.
Dave Maylis, Captain Waterloo Police Department. That is correct. We've put in a lot of overtime recently. We have approximately 10 openings on the department. We're trying to fill those. The last civil service test we gave, we had 10 people on the civil service list and only could hire four. We have a fifth person being hired Monday, which all that stuff will help, but most of these candidates got to go to the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, which you saw in the approvals today. It takes us approximately 10 months to get them through the process where they're actually helpful on the street. So, yeah, we are short manpower. The overtime that we paid out through RagBri and all the special events, and obviously we'll pay that same thing coming up here with Irish Fest. We have to have officers, you know, actively involved in those incidents and those events. So the only option most times is pay overtime.
And my, my next question is, is the, the police department applies for hotel motel, for assistance for some of these events. And would it be possible to, to, to apply for additional funding? To, to, to help offset some of your expenses that, I mean, we're going to run out of overtime money, plain and simple.
Yeah, we do annually apply for the hotel motel funds. Typically, it's based on what we had for events. Obviously, last year with the COVID virus, our events were completely cut down. I think we only had, actually had two events that cost us overtime. But this year, obviously, we'll have an exception because we do have considerable events this year.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.? Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Director Hudding and Director Schenkel. I've been reaching out a lot to Paul for a variety of things from the Liberty Park Neighborhood Association meeting to getting some porta potties, including an accessible one down near the splash pad for parents of young kids who maybe don't understand time management. And even just some small things like Bon Trager Park had some weeds. And Paul and Director, and Kent have been really, really helpful in, in addressing those needs whenever I've reached out to them. So I just want to thank both of them and all of their staff that, that make all that stuff look good for the citizens of the city.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know we've, I know, you know, Mr. Hall with Experience Waterloo was on, but I just wanted to again say what a great event we had last week and really represented Waterloo. I've, I mean, other than a train, I don't know of any major incidents that we had. I know we have a reputation sometimes for, for certain things, but I think Waterloo should be very proud. I got to hang out a little bit with Jessica backstage for, in the hot, hot weather. And the writers that came through appreciated all of, all of that. And I know when I left that the Experience Waterloo staff was still working their tails off to get things cleaned up. And when I showed up at 6:30 in the morning on Thursday, you know, I'm sure Jessica was there to help with her and her dad and all those guys got that stage and everything tore down. And it was amazing to see the transformation in about six hours of the things that our city staff got done and all of, everybody out there doing stuff. So I, again, kudos for Tavis for getting them here. And hopefully we can, we can get another big event like that real soon.
This weekend?
Well, I mean, I mean, again, in the future, not this weekend, but, and Irish Fest is coming up, so yes.
Right, this weekend it'll be triple.
No, like a one, like a once, you know, once, uh, once every five, six year kind of thing. Because we, you know, and maybe we could do it in like June instead of everything in July and August.
All right, Mrs. Klein.
I want to piggyback on what my colleagues have said. I got stationed on Burton Avenue in the middle of the sun for three hours, directing people to the left end to behind me and answering all kinds of personal questions about where specific addresses were. And the people coming in. the people coming in from all parts of the country, they were so interested in us and we were interested in them, and everybody was so polite, and they were so hot and so tired. So it was a lot of fun. I echo the notion that once every five years is good enough for me. It was a lot of hot.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to close public comments, receive comments, and place on file.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Comments closed.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda with the following changes. In 1A1, to add to bill's payment, the amount of $6,26,590.16, and remove number 11 under the consent agenda, number 11 and number 18 for further discussion.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution setting data public hearing as September 7, 2021, to approve an application for a state revolving fund, SRF loan, to make available to the public the contents of an environmental information document and the city's project plan in conjunction with the Highway 63 interceptor project, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Mr. Dreyer, you have a question about this item?
Yes, I do. My question, David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. My question is that the approval of the application for revolving funds, that means we're borrowing more money. Does this have to do with the bridge beautification? Because I understand that our portion of that's going to be about $250,000. So if we don't have the money, don't do it. Thank you.
This is a project that will help relieve some of the pressure from some of the backup problems that people may have been having. So this is Highway 63, not the beautification that we mentioned.
Okay, Highway 63 is the bridge over the railroad tracks. Thank you, sir.
Jamie, can you talk about, or is that Brian? Randy, can you talk about this project? Just, I started to let it go, but just so we can correctly end with the correct statements.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. This is actually in reference to the sanitary improvements that we're going to be doing along Highway 63 for the sanitary sewers and then some stormwater improvements as well, too. It's not in conjunction to the bridge.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution setting data public hearing as September 7, 2021, to make final selection of site location for Hammond Avenue Bridge replacement and improvements to establish the amount of just compensation for certain property interests to be acquired for project purposes and authorize the use and condemnation procedures for acquisition of said property interests in furtherance of the project objectives and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second. A motion has been made with the second.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. The final location, selection of the final location, this is a gravel road just south of the Hawkeye Tech Farm area. I don't understand, first off, the final selection of the site location. What are we moving? Are we moving it left, right? What are we doing? And compensation for a certain property interest, it's in the country. And it almost is in, because I looked up on my map, it's almost in the county. So I guess I don't understand the verbiage here. To acquire property, are we widening the bridge on a narrow gravel road? I don't understand. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Go out and look if you don't understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
All right, no. Would you please discuss this project?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So this is all specific language that we must follow per state code to go through potential condemnation on this. The bridge has been designed. The location, it will be redesigned, or it will be designed so that it meets the 100-year flood level in that area, so there is some small property acquisitions needed for slope and the proper layout of that. So moving ahead with this, this is all the wording that we need to move ahead with condemnation. We are far apart on the values that the property owners believe are out there in our appraisals, and so this is our next step to continue that process forward.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of notice of public hearing for the business property lease with Friends of Faith Retirement Homes, Inc., in the amount of $10 for the use of property located east of 527 Park Lane with the term ending December 31, 2096.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone with questions on retirement home?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I'm not opposed to a retirement home. I'm close. We need more cameras to watch whatever we do while we're driving, yet we rent property to Friendship Village for $10, is that a month, a year, or till 2096? The city's always looking for outside sources, yet we give away the farm so many other places. 2.13 acres, and we buy land at $35,000 an acre. Yet we can't seem to find some common sense to charge the right amount for the loan of city property. I'm assuming it's a loan of city property, because I understand from reading the article, they need to make the improvements there. I'm not opposed to the use of the land, but let's get the right value for that property. $35,000 an acre and we're charging $10 for what kind of terms? An acre? Or $10 for 2.1 acres?
All right, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I see Mike Young is here, so he can probably go into the details of the project. Looking at the summary of it, the Friendship Village is in a great partnership with the city of Waterloo and is making a huge investment in this area by creating pickleball courts and expanding parking lot as a part of the Bon Trager Park location. So this will be a great enhancement to the community and the city of Waterloo through their investment, which Mike can probably further go into it, but that's what we're entering into the partnership for the multi-year, for their use of it, but also for the citizens' use.
All right, thank you. Mr. Young?
Good evening. I'm Mike Young. I live at 215 Pauline Place in Waterloo. And I'm a lawyer here at the Dutton Law Firm and represent Friendship Village. And we've worked on this project for about four years, gone back to 2017. I spoke about it at the last meeting, the thought that went into building where we are and redeveloping this park lane site as opposed to building out something new. And the thought was, it was best for the community, best for the neighborhood, and best for Friendship Village to build the existing site, but it meant that we were landlocked. And so at that time, working with city staff and others, we looked at the surrounding area of improvements we could make that would kind of be a win-win-win situation. And that's what we think has gone into this plan that we're asking for approval tonight is, because it's a plan we're very proud of, because we think it helps the neighborhood and the neighbors. And we worked really hard to talk to the neighbors on Saratoga, right next, Clerk and Associates, the neighbors around had meetings, sent them letters, talked to them about their concerns. We think it's a win for the Barter community and all the stakeholders that use the park. So we spoke to members of Leisure Services Commission about the uses that are there, things like sledding, and we're trying to put together improvements that would help that, cross-country meets, parking, things like that. So all that has gone into the plan. So what you'll see on there is just the lease, but it's going to be about $550,000 right now, probably more, of improvements that Friendship Village will pay for at the park. They'll be owned by the city, but Friendship Village is going to pay for those improvements and maintain them. And I think there'll be improvements, they're not just for Friendship Village, they're for the community. And by that, I mean the parking lot that's there. It will be used by Friendship Village during certain special events, but the vast majority of the time, it's going to be available to the public, to the neighborhood, to have parking off the street, but also users of the park. So whether, if that's a cross-country meet, a high school cross-country meet, for example, or if it's sledding, it will have off-street parking, which should benefit everybody, and it'll be open to the community. Pickleball courts, same thing. There may be times, and we talked about maybe times a day, like, for example, in the morning from 8 o'clock to noon, the pickleball courts would be reserved for Friendship Village residents and their guests, but the rest of the day, it would be open to the whole community. And then the third improvement that you'll see here is expanding the water detention area, and that benefits Friendship Village, but it was also designed to benefit kids who go sledding as well. So the reason that's built in, that you'll see in the plan, that's kind of a natural amphitheater, it has kind of a slope on it, is that kids can sled down that. And then the blue part you see on the screen extends their slide a little bit. So that's kind of a run for them to go through. Also, the thought is, in cross-country meets, for example, that could be your finish line in the blue, and then people can be standing above kind of a natural amphitheater. So the starting point and ending point. So that's why I say, I really think this is a positive thing for the community. I think it's a positive thing for the neighborhood, and it's a positive thing for Friendship Village. We are grateful to the mayor, the city council, and the staff, like I said, that we've been working with for four years on this, to come up with this plan. And we're really excited about it. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we're close to opening the first building there. I think the date is August 16. So we're two weeks away from people moving in, which is really exciting. And so you'll continue to see improvements there, but we're very proud of it.
Yeah, we, thank you for your investment.
Yes.
Really, ability to have some give and take and some conversation. So we appreciate all of your efforts, too.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Since we're having the conversation, I just wanted to make it clear that the Leisure Services Commission has voted unanimously to approve this lease, and it's culmination of, as our attorney here said, four years, probably four years plus of planning. And we do think it's a win-win. So Leisure Services is directly and completely behind this.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
And just one last note on the questions that were asked. Friendship Village will pay for these improvements, and then will also pay for the maintenance of these improvements. And at the end of the lease, though, they're city property, so it's not buying the park, it's not taking the park away. We really think of it as adding to the park. So, thanks again.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Leisure Services Commission.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a business property lease with Friends of Faith Retirement Homes, Inc., in the amount of $10 for the use of property located east of 527 Park Lane with the term ending December 31, 2096, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I live just up the street from Bon Trager Park and Friendship Village, and I want to say that Friendship Village is a great neighbor. They have been working so hard, and I know they went through COVID and had to deal with lots of things over this last year. And as someone who tries to exercise, because my doctor told me to, I walk around Bon Trager Park a lot. So I'm very excited to see more things happening. I know my kids are going to be excited to have more sledding opportunities, and I'm just excited that we can work with a prominent nonprofit in the city to help the city be a better place for families and residents in all ages to live. So I just want to commend Friendship Village for all their hard work, city staff for their hard work, and I look forward to all of these new improvements.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
In my touring of the city lately, I have run into three different couples that are so excitedly waiting to move in. And they're so high on you guys. And I was just, the other day, going through our agenda, and I was looking, Friends of Faith, you know, how often does a city get an organization that comes to them and offers so much? You know, we get a lot of people coming with their hands out, but very seldom do we get people coming to give us help and to take part of our property and make it better. And I just think you're great neighbors. I look forward to these people moving in. They're so thrilled. So congratulations.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, the Westdale Bioswold landscaping contract, the hearing is canceled because there were no bids received. Could someone take four, five, and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The first is a resolution approving a ward of bid to Wirtches Uniforms of Cedar Falls, Iowa, with a not-to-exceed amount of $24,000 in conjunction with fiscal year ending 2022. Police Department uniform needs and rescinding resolution number 2021-466 in its entirety. Number five is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number one to a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed October 28 of 2019 in an amount not to exceed $993,500 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2021 Laporte Road-Hess Road improvements, Phase One, contract number 1016, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And finally, number six is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Vandewall and Associates in the amount of $72,000 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2021-2022. Downtown Waterloo planning efforts, redevelopment design, riverfront development, and funding opportunities, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, Mr. Morrissey. We have an individual with a question.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. This is the number five and number six. We have $993,500 on that particular situation, but this is an amendment, a supplemental agreement rather than a change order. So how much is that change order costing, or is it the $993,500? And what was the original amount of the agreement? And number six, the funding opportunities that these people have brought us, they have been with us for a few years. How much funding have they helped us get? Thank you.
All right. Jamie, number five, please.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. To start with Mr. Dreyer's first question, this is the original agreement with AECOM was for about $550,000, and that was for preliminary design. and that was for preliminary design of Laporte Road all the way from Hawthorne down to Schallas Road. That was to help get us an idea of what we wanted the corridor to look like, how many lanes, those sorts of things. That was the preliminary design. The current one before you is for the final design of Laporte Road from basically Sandmarn and south to Schallas. That portion only is where we are going to go ahead and start the final design, and we will move into construction. At this point, the funding right now is coming from our MPO, which is state and federal funding to pay for most of this. There will be 20% city match on this. But otherwise, then we will move to construction, probably in another year to 18 months.
All right, thank you. No. Number six, I mean, we just wrote a, they just wrote an $820,000 grant to help us.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Yeah, I can definitely go back and tally up all the grants and projects that we were able to get with some of the drawings. You know, the the original Riverfront Renaissance Vision Iowa funding was gained because of the the work with Vandewall. We've gotten, received a number of CDBG grants after the 2008 flood due to their drawings. Of course, some of the projects are down there, like Grand Crossing and the Hawkeye College are down there because of some of their drawings. So I can I can definitely go through and get a tally of all the projects that we think were involved with the Vandewall work and get those to counsel and to Mr. Dreyer.
All right. Mr. Morrissey.
Yep, can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my first thing is with number four. Does the, how many officers' uniforms are affected by this resolution? And the second part of that is, this includes the sewing of the new patch on every uniform. Does it not? And then number six is, we have talked regarding the Vandewall Agreement, Professional Services Agreement, with the addition of the north side of the river. And looking at the map that's available as attachment, it shall, shows only the north side of the river with the smattering of colorations, with the majority of them, it looks like being residential. So when is the north side of the river going to see some benefit from this professional services agreement?
Right. Number four, Captain. How many officers and sewing?
Dave Malus, Captain, Waterloo Police. This uniform bid does not include the sewing of the patches. That doesn't mean that the funding can't come out of there. This is just an annual bid that we do for a uniform allowance or allotment for the department. So that don't mean that every officer of the 123 officers that we have, that they will get a uniform this year, but it just goes to replacing uniforms that we have throughout the year. Plus, as we do new hires, they get a full uniform allotment when they first come on board. Obviously, the new patch that we have will be part of that as we get new uniforms.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
As a follow-up to that, why aren't the current, or the Griffin patches already off the uniforms? And the new patch put on? It's now August 2nd.
Well, I think we are underway on that transition. I mean, you gotta, that's moving forward. So I, I mean, I don't know what to say.
Yeah.
Well, when do we expect, Mr. Mayor, when do we expect those Griffin patches to be off?
A good start would be approving this budget, approving this money right here is a good direction, but Captain, you have any?
Yeah, I can just add to that, that we are in the process of getting the patch bids, which are almost complete, but we had to slow things down a little bit because obviously of this uniform bid, we have to have the uniform bid first for the annual year so we know who we're getting our uniforms from, so we can take care of that other side of getting the patches replaced.
So when do we foresee it coming to counsel that, for the monies, to make sure that those patches are off before, say, the end of September?
Yeah, this is going to take some considerable time, because you're talking about a lot of uniforms and a lot of, I mean, jackets, polos, dress shirts for each officer. It is going to take some time. The goal is hopefully to get at least one uniform per officer, and then we'll work our way through the other uniforms as time goes by. But this is going to take some time for the seamstress and those people to take them off and re-sew them on each uniform. There's a lot of uniforms. It's going to take some time.
Mr. Mayor, just as response, I would hope to see some movement on that very soon.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Morrissey, and thank you, Captain Malus. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Feis?
Number six. Mr. Mayor, number six.
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So I believe the question was, when are we going to see some development on the north side of the river?
Yeah.
When is there going to be some planning associated with this agreement with Vandewall that we can see as a counsel that there is some planning going on? Because I don't see any planning going on, yet this agreement from two years back, three years back probably, has included the discussion that something needs to happen on the north side, and so far, I've seen absolutely nothing.
And they just had a map up on the screen. There, there you can see that the majority of the work has been on the south side of the river for some of the redevelopment, block by block. There is some redevelopment along the riverfront. Of course, the first new construction project we had in or near downtown Waterloo was the Riverside, which is right off of Sixth Street by the Unique Building, that kind of started our residential revitalization in downtown. So that was directly one of Vandewall's first designs out there. So we are working on, we've acquired some property along the riverfront for future development. We have some prospects out there, and I think we'd all like to see some more redevelopment on the north side as well and near downtown. Sometimes it just takes time to to get those projects to unfold.
And a project that we've been working on or started working on in direct response has been what we call the Live Learn Project Area, and that is taking the tech works at the core and expanding all the way from Church Row to the Walnut area and working with different schools like the Waterloo Career Center for reinvestment and work and training right along that internal corridor so that we can put people back to work as well. So we began the efforts of the Live Learn concept to try to address some parts of what you're asking about today.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Oh, and in conjunction with that and bringing up tech works and that, I have not heard, and I'm just wondering, did the marina planning disappear?
Marina design is being finalized. AECOM continues to work with the Army Corps of Engineers for the, since we're near the levee and on the levee in some portions. I believe we're still set for an October-November letting schedule, depending upon how the final comments come back from the Army Corps, if that gets pushed back. But otherwise, we do have some over $500,000 in enhancement tap funding, which is federal road dollars in that. So we're ready to move ahead with the first phase, just getting to that final design.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk or counsel.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
No on four, yes on five and six.
Thank you. Number seven and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Seven is a resolution approving a development agreement with Gateway Real Estate Holdings, LLC in conjunction with the construction of a new 12,885-foot square, square foot retail building at the northwest corner of Fletcher and University Avenues, a $1.7 million investment with 50% tax rebate for 10 years, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight is a resolution authorizing an exception to the City of Waterloo's purchasing procedures policy to approve the purchase of two snow control trucks from Thompson Truck Center of Waterloo, Iowa.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Number eight, I went into the computer farther, and what is a snow control truck? First off, is that a snow plow? And looking further at the documents, it looks to me like these were already purchased without council approval. Is that true? Thank you.
Randy.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. Yes, trucks would be used for snow and ice control. So yes, they're plow trucks. And as far as the documents, they were not actually purchased without council approval. It was just the documentation is going through as far as getting the price through the bid portion through Sourcewell. And it was, it's subject to council approval before we could move forward.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bozen. Anybody questions?
Well, I have a question, but not for Jamie, not for you, Randy, but thank you. I'd had a question on on number seven for Noel. I think Mr. Delarue was getting up to talk, though. Okay, I saw him stand up. But on this particular item here, because the the building is under construction now, so they're coming in after the fact for the for the TIF rebates. And then I, so I was, a question on that, on whether this has been in the planning stages, and they were guaranteed the TIF rebates prior to this, coming before counsel. And my other question on this particular item is that, on this gateway through Waterloo, through on the new University Avenue, I noticed that this building is metal sided. Do we have any type of, of, anything in this TIF and on this corridor that deals with the facades and and the siding of the buildings?
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So this would be the first project in our new university TIF for a development agreement. They they were looking at the possibility of revitalizing this site. As you may recall, there was kind of some older car repair buildings there and older office building that Warren was was renting for some time. And then the Papa Johns will be demolished and moved into the new building as part of that overall site redevelopment. Due to the complexity or the delays in getting some materials now, they did move ahead with with ordering some of the projects before the development agreement was fully approved. This is also the university corridors located in the Consolidated Urban Revitalization Area, the CURA. So they could use the CURA to get basically the same incentives that they're getting through the TIF. We believe the development agreement is more beneficial to the city. So instead of it being a tax abatement, where they're just being taxed less at first with the tax rebate, they're being taxed with the rebate coming back to them. So the city's able to gain some additional revenue for the debt service levy and all that. So we think the development agreement is more advantageous to the city than the CURA program for kind of immediate revenue needs. In terms of the design, we do not have any design corridor specifications in here. We can certainly put them in any kind of development agreement as we move ahead so that the council could see the designs ahead of time.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's a good idea. All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number nine. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. Number nine is ordinance amending the shared mobility device e-scooter license. I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 4, Operating Areas Subsections AC, D, and L of Section 7, Operating Regulations in Subsection A of Section 8, rider regulations, all of Chapter 8, shared mobility device license, Title III, Business License and Regulations, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 4, Operating Areas Subsection AC, D, and L of Section 7, Operating Regulations, Subsection A of Section 8, rider regulations, all of Chapter 8, shared mobility device license, Title III, Business License and Regulations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions on this item?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I understand the police are to enforce, and I understand they can't be everywhere, but I see many people in downtown that are riding these things that I know, I've not stopped them, but I know are underage. So there has to be something in this that requires the mobility people to not let them unlock that thing unless they're at least 18 years old. That's in your code. That's in your ordinance. And I don't see any cops on downtown beats that could enforce this, because I go by the cop shop different times during the different days, different hours, and the police cars are always there. Funny. And I also remember, and I opened the computer up farther on this new change, but in the original change, it said something about a brick and mortar rental and return. They're all over town. I said this the last time I was up here. So how can there be something in your your ordinance that says a brick and mortar, and then you don't enforce that? There's no way to control this unless you start abiding by your ordinance, because they're on every corner, they're in the parking, they're on the, not on the street, but they're out where, according to reading the ordinance the first time, unless I didn't get to see the new changes, and they include that, that they're out by the curb on, by parking meters, et cetera. People can't open the door of their car, et cetera. So it seems like you're you're getting the cart before the horse here. Thank you.
All right. We have two of our vendors here. Any comments about age and what you do, probably individually, but the age portion conversation?
Good evening. Gianluca Spriano, Director of Business Development at Albis, one of the two vendors. So regarding the age, we require the the scan of the ID so that help and avoid the fact of having underage people riding the scooter. So and then we can implement any kind of, any kind of request from the city if we want to do like a double check, triple check randomly to redo the scan of the IDs so no one can pass by his, his or her profile to use the scooter. That's something we can absolutely do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
How's it going? Craig Bennett, Licensed Manager for Bird. So what we're doing to prevent the underage riding is going to adjust our app to have a physical ID scan. That's for single riders, and also our app does offer a ride share, a group ride, where one phone can rent multiple rides. We'll also be adjusting that to the app where all rides from one phone will need a physical ID scan from each rider. So like you mentioned as well, you know, any adjustments or changes the city feels that we need to make to our app, we're all for it, and we can definitely get that changed and adjusted for you guys, and that's it.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question for Kelly. When we pass this with three readings tonight, when would this take effect?
We'll have to verify that with the courier. I believe this one, since we're going through and just amending specific sections of the code instead of repealing and replacing the entire chapter, this one should become effective at a faster rate. this one should become effective at a faster rate, potentially by the end of next week. Because we repealed and placed, replaced the entire chapter on July nineteenth, those changes are not going to be able to take effect until August fourth due to the large size the courier has to accommodate publishing in the legal section.
And my only question for that was is I just wanted to make sure there was enough time for Bird and Helbis both to make the changes to their apps so that once this ordinance is in place, everything is functioning as well as the ID portions of it and that. So excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
At our work session earlier, the question on enforcement was raised. And at that time, we didn't have anyone here from the police department. And I assured everyone that I would check with the police department and get their answer. And I was lucky enough to talk to Captain, Captain Dave Muller earlier. And he assured me that the police department is aware that they're responsible for enforcement. So if you see, if Jessica, you get a phone call, you have whatever, you can call the non-emergency number in the police department. Now again, as we heard earlier, they're short on staff. And it's kind of unfortunately like the fireworks. They just can't get every place and they sometimes need to prioritize. But they are aware that they're responsible for the enforcement of this ordinance and will do their very best to do that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, as in the work session, and I note in this motion to pass, there's two mentions of the operating area. And as I stated in the work session, the operating area on the north side of the river is far less than the operating area on the south side of the river, even though the north side of the river has businesses and that, that should be included. So I am just asking Kelly and Marty or whoever to put together a motion to amend by enhancing the operating area to include along the geographical areas that I mentioned earlier in the work session, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Amos.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I understand what Councilman Morrissey is saying from a standpoint of expanding that area. But one of my concerns with expanding the area at this point in time is is those scooters have to be ridden on the street. And when you look at Franklin Street, Councilman Morrissey was talking about going over to Raisin that. Those streets are in pretty bad shape from a standpoint of riding a scooter on them at this point in time. I know that there's things in the work to repair those streets. But that would be a concern of mine at this point in time as far as expanding that area.
All right. Other comments? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Juin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mrs. Juin.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Juin.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, number ten, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by adding a new Article F Mobile Food Business to Title II Business and License Regulations,[1600.06]